Order, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with the roll call.
Mayor Jeff Gieland.
Present.
Councilmember Bryan.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Here.
Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Here.
And also present Commander Heath from the Anoka County Sheriff's Department, and City Engineer Shane Nelson, and City Planner Liz Stockman.
And we will ask if you have not signed in, please sign in, there's a book at the back to sign in. We do accept open floor items, if you have something to present before the council that's not on our agenda, there's a signup sheet in the back, you can sign up for that. And we have three minutes, if you would hold to three minutes, to share your thoughts with us. If you have cell phones, we do ask that you silence the cell phones. And we would like to welcome our local Cub Scout, Den, tonight. We have four members with us, and they're leaders, so we appreciate your coming and spending some time with the City Council this evening, so thank you very much, and glad you're part of that. I remember my days as a Cub Scout, though it's a long time ago, but I did appreciate my time with the Scouts, so thanks for being here tonight. The agenda, I would like to, before we approve it, move two items. I would like to take Item G from the consent agenda, and move that down to the council items, and Item H from the consent agenda, and move that down to the council items. Any other changes or amendments to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
And I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So Commander Heath, you're up.
Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, City Council, Mayor, city staff, and citizens. I'd like to present the Sheriff's Office report for October of 2019. During the month, Sheriff's deputies responded to 149 calls for service in the city. A few calls of service that I wanted to point out, again, just one of those things I'd like to bring to the council to show that sometimes, no matter what we're doing as citizens, there's people out there that are doing things that are not quite so upright and honest. On the 17th of the month, in the 21400 block of Dolomite Street Northwest, we took two different reports of thefts. And I just bring those things up as they were items of easy convenience for people to steal, and it happened during the middle of the day. There's really no rhyme or reason, there's no suspects in the things that were taken. Actually, both were RV batteries. They're expensive, but they're not a, really not a high target thing that people would be out and about looking for, so I think it's just, people that have a bad, bad direction they're going in life are out looking for simple, easy things for them to steal, and that's what they could find. So as I like to remind the council and everybody, do whatever you can to make your valuables in your home as hard a target as you can, because there are people that are just out there that are looking for something quick and easy to take. And you hard-working folks and all of us that work hard for the things we have are the ones that suffer. So, not a significance, but still something that is very troubling, I'm sure, to the people that were on the receiving end of that. And those types of cases are very difficult for us to solve, because without a witness or something else, it's not like, it's very difficult for us to track a specific battery from one type of RV from the next. So, just something to point out again, as I do every once in a while, we see these things go up and down and in trends, and it's hard, hard to pinpoint when or if it's ever going to happen, so. And I also like to point out some activities that our deputies take to let everybody know that we're out here and looking for things that are out of the ordinary, and things that are kind of strange and don't belong. On the 18th, one of our deputies made a traffic stop on a vehicle for simply having a tail light out. Normally, a traffic stop like that would just be a stop, identify the driver. Most times, people don't have any idea that they have a light out on their vehicle, or they're in the process of getting it fixed or something like that. But the deputy made the traffic stop, there were four occupants, and when he was conversing with them, it didn't, the conversation didn't make a lot of sense to him. They were on their way to St. Paul from Elk River, and that was his first clue, stopping them here. Now then, doesn't seem like a direct route for most folks to get to St. Paul from Elk River. So he started just looking more, and ultimately ran a driver's license check on the driver who had a valid Wisconsin driver's license but had a suspended driver's license in Minnesota. Continued to work, there were just some things that didn't add up to the deputy, continued to look at some of the occupants and what was going on in the vehicle, and one of the occupants gave him a name that just, it didn't come back anywhere. We can run registration checks and license checks, and it's unusual to have anybody in today's day and age that just, you can't run a check and find something about that person. The deputy continued to dig further, and ultimately was able to, the gentleman had said he had a driver's license out of New Jersey. The deputy did their checks and still couldn't find anything. They were able to talk to one of the passengers who, I think inadvertently slipped and told them the real first name of the person versus the fictitious name. Ultimately, the deputy was able to find a Minnesota identification for this person, and that male had multiple warrants for his arrest out of Ramsey County, Washington County, Anoka County, and I think even out of Hennepin. So, and again, non-residents of now then, just kind of passing through, doing different things. One of the other deputies that arrived unseen started speaking with one of the other passengers. They admitted to having some narcotics in the vehicle, and the deputy ultimately was able to locate methamphetamine and marijuana on one of the other occupants. So, a simple traffic stop for an equipment violation that is normally for us, a five-minute encounter with the motoring public, turned into something that multiple people went to jail, and we found some people that were actually fugitives from justice, and were able to take them into custody. So, we do have folks out here that, even though on one hand we have the days where we've got people that are being victimized, we have folks that are out here working hard to try to keep others from becoming victimized, so. And then just another month, not a high volume of calls at bar none, but just to keep the council up to date, there's multiple calls this month where multiple kids at a time were out of control. And one of the quotes I saw on one of the reports that was very problematic to me was that the caller had advised that they were severely understaffed and couldn't gain control of the individuals that were involved in the incident. So, we're not seeing any improvement on what's going on up there. So, it's just, I'm not trying to make it sound bad, but I want the council to be informed of some of the things that we're seeing and hearing, so when issues come in front of you guys, that you're able to have a little bit of backstory and some understanding of some of the things that have gone on, so.
I wonder, Shane and Liz, could we double-check the property line on that facility and see if it isn't really in Oak Grove? Just checking.
Yeah. And that's all I have. Does the mayor or the council, do you have any questions for?
Council, anything for the commander?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'm just curious, is Varnon like a cycle, because there's been months where there's been lots of calls, and this month we're down, I would call it significantly.
Right, but it's all dependent on the people that are there, and whatever's going on with them. What we're seeing in some of the calls, there's not only criminal issues, but mental health issues. You know, in these calls of this month, we had one that was taken to a secure juvenile detention facility, and another that was taken to a hospital for psychiatric issues. So, and for evaluation, we don't make those determinations there, but we need to get them somewhere so they can be evaluated. So, it really varies on the population that's there as to what's going to happen in a given month. Really no different than anywhere else, but unfortunately, some of the people that are there are already predisposed to some of those issues that they're trying to work through already, so.
It's unfortunate that five seems down, you know, it used to be five was significant. So Commander, on the reports, are we, the computer running well these days so that our year-to-date 2018 and 2019 are accurate numbers, do you believe?
Yes, sir.
Because you're looking at, you know, bar none, 27 last year, at this time 92 this year. Medicals, we were at 19, we're up to 81. Animal complaints, 15 to 45, so it seems like all activity is up significantly, but some in particular.
Yes.
I mean, the total radio calls, 934 last year, 1,653 this year, so. So we're not doing anything different, we're just responding.
Correct. I wouldn't say, and remember, we've talked about some of the issues we were having in the reporting, and I think now we're finally getting the most accurate snapshot that we can get about what's truly happening. So I would think 2,000, I think we're doing, we're doing okay, but some of the trends can be concerning. And those are the ones, when we see those, we try to discern is there something we can do differently as an organization, and we look at those.
And when people see these statistics, you know, the one that sticks out is, you know, 17 assaults, but the majority of those would all be related to the previously discussed facility.
Yes, many of them are. We don't have, you know, and that's something that I would always caution anybody, don't look at a snapshot of numbers to think that there's a city that has a problem. It has to be something that you would see over time. Sometimes there's years and months where we have spikes, and then they go right back down. It just really varies. Sometimes there can be as much as a one-problem residence or location in a city that can dramatically change some of those things, or if you get a couple of them, that can change those things.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Commander. Mayor, do you know if we have any floor items? Anybody sign up for the floor items? Seeing none, we'll continue on.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I second.
A motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to our planning and zoning and our public hearing. So, I will open the public hearing for Chris and Sarah Holzum, 19256 Baugh Street. For consideration of a lot split, request for flaglot conditional use permit to allow access to Driscoll Street via 66th Terminus within the adjacent Rolling Hills Plaza. Planner Stockman, you want to get us up to speed on that?
Certainly will. So, the Holzums came to me a year and a half to two years ago, looking to do a simple lot split, and we looked at the options, they have access on Baugh Street, but they would like to, well, first of all, they own two 40s. The front 40 is on Baugh Street, and the rear 40 is behind. So, there we go. Front 40 is on Baugh here, and the rear 40 is behind. So, logically speaking, you know, we would look to Baugh Street for direct access, or the extension of Driscoll Street, to create the frontage we need. There were some practical difficulties involved with this case regarding the terrain and kind of existing location of the farmhouse, which made it a little more challenging than usual. So, what the Holzums would like to do is access off of Driscoll Street, but as you can see, we have 66 feet which abuts the northern border of their front 40, and the location where they want to build a house is on the rear 40. So what they're doing is splitting off 10 acres, and they would add that to the rear 40, and basically create an access up to Driscoll. Now, they've done their due diligence as far as planning out this front 40 and how it would lay out possibly in the future as far as street arrangements go. So we have a large wetland here, a small wetland to the south, and with this farmstead location, it's difficult to come straight east-west in from Baugh. So, since the ordinance does allow for a flaglot conditional use permit, that's what they are requesting along with a simple lot split. So this is what the survey looks like. One 10-acre parcel, parcel A, which they would combine with the rear 40. They would dedicate 66 feet of new public right-of-way, and what would happen is, we would allow through the conditional use permit temporary access via what we call a flaglot conditional use permit, but what that really means is that we are allowing less than the 150-foot street of street frontage on a temporary basis until such time as this extension of Driscoll Street can be built and would serve or extend further south. So, in exchange for plating this right-of-way, under the conditional use permit rules, they would have to meet, I believe it's like 15 different conditions, under the flaglot conditional use permit regulations, as well as deed restricting the property, and that would be, all 80 acres would be deed restricted under that lot split agreement, saying that that would not be developed until such time as this street is built. So, in essence, that is the trade-off. They've also voluntarily agreed to give the assessment amount that the Driscoll Street neighborhood, the Rolling Hills neighborhood, paid for improvements on Driscoll Street this year, since they would be accessing through that neighborhood and not off of Baugh. Now, I'm sure you noticed in the, in my memo, and in the previous report earlier in October, that the city engineer recommended denial for this option coming through from Driscoll Street, and I'll let him speak too if he wishes, but his main concerns were the connectivity features, in other words, generally the ordinance does require that who's ever creating the access needs to pave that access, and then the city accepts it when it's up to city standards. We do have the out for flaglots, but the concern long-term is that if we keep allowing these one-lot splits through a flaglot or without paving the street, that burden for paving streets is either going to fall upon adjacent property owners or the city. So that was Shane Nelson's reasoning for kind of opposing what's going on here. Having said that, we took five options to planning and zoning commission. They chose this option as the simplest and the most reasonable access. As I said, that would allow temporary access until such time as this street is built. So, under the flaglot rules, there would be a driveway approximately 50 feet south of this north lot line that would go back to serve this home. And one of the other major features is that the Holzums will have to build a turnaround, some sort of a T or an area for a large vehicle such as a fire truck to turn around so that they are safe in case of an emergency. So in your packet, you have a quite extensive list of findings, as well as the lot split agreement. Both of those have been reviewed by the city attorney, and the Holzums have also reviewed those and have had no changes.
Shane, did you want to speak to it at all, or?
Sure, I mean, Mr. Mayor, so, I mean, my main reason for recommending denial with my initial review back in September was because, in my interpretation, I didn't meet our city code. Our city code requires 150 feet of street frontage, and in general, I support that city code requirement, because without it, we would never have any new streets constructed. You think of all of our residential developments that we have, and if we had all those lots accessing existing county roads, we just have driveways everywhere on county roads, and we have really illogical development patterns. With that being said, Planner Stockman and Attorney Rupi, I think, worked out a way to process this application such that it is allowable under our ordinances as a conditional use, and with the proposed deed restriction and conditional use permit, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Will they be required to pave that driveway, they want to?
Not necessarily. It depends. Shane would review that, and I would review that at the time of building permits immeasurable. They would have to show the, how it's going to be graded. If there's a certain steep area and we need to control drainage from going onto neighboring properties or that kind of a thing, we may ask that a portion of it be paved, but it's not necessary to pave all of it. But they could have a gravel turnaround area. And it could be a T or a hammerhead-type turnaround that could double as parking area, maybe for visitors, but just so once a large vehicle gets back there, they can get back out, whether it be a UPS truck or a fire truck.
Anything else for the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
So Planner Stockman, so we're splitting the, whatever you want to call it, the east 40 into two pieces, but then that parcel A is going to be, again, then recombined with the west part?
Right, correct. So, that is correct. So we'll have about a 50-acre lot, and then a 28 or so acres in the front that will be sold.
And there's questions from the council? This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the matter? We noted that nobody raised their hand, and nobody is here to speak to the matter? Does the office have any input that's been presented to you that's pertinent to this?
None. I received no calls either.
And we did our due diligence on notification of surrounding properties? All right. Last call for questions or concerns. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing closed, I will now put it to the council to motion a yea or nay on this application.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the lot reconfiguration at CUP for a single flaglot, pit numbers 30-33-25-31-0001 and 30-33-25-32-0001, based on the findings presented by our city planner.
I'll second that.
A motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your patience, and good luck. All right. Request from Dan and Julie Gimo for 19009 Rhinestone Street for an interim use permit to legalize a home extended business offering indoor storage within two existing pole sheds encompassing 4,960 square feet. Planner Stockman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gimo's live on Rhinestone Street, they've been operating an interior storage business for 20-some years. It's been, it's gone unnoticed by many neighbors. We've had no complaints about the business. The reason that it came up was someone noticed an ad on Craigslist, I think it was, and felt it was only fair that, you know, they come in and apply for an interim use permit like other home businesses have been asked to do. So we began the process. Here's a more detailed layout of the site. These are the white, two white buildings are the pole sheds. The vehicles in the rear here have been removed, those were some of his personal vehicles, those have since been put inside. It's a very clean and well-kept site. The findings of fact do limit the business to interior storage only. If any exterior storage would be required, they would have to come before you again. So fairly simple. The planning and zoning recommended approval, 420, we just had four members present that night, and they did remove the hours of operation, stating that they didn't feel it was concern. People bring something here once, and then typically leave it for the winter and then come back in the spring to get it. It does not, it's not a large traffic generator. And then they just added a small comment about if there is any noise or complaints that it would be re-looked at as far as hours go. Other than that, it's very straightforward, like I said, very clean site, there's some pictures here, this is the front of the home, the rear view, and then the back. You kind of back up to a farm field there. So our office would recommend approval subject to the conditions listed in your findings of fact.
Questions from the council?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Just a comment to Julie Gimo, the spouse, she has not been at the meetings, and I just called her to chat today to be sure she was on board with everything, and, yep, so they're both in favor of the project, and okay with the findings as written.
Council? Questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move that the council approve the request for 19009 Rhinestone, PID 28-33-25-44-007 for an interim use permit for a home extended business offering indoor storage within the two existing buildings on site.
I second that.
Motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, move on to code enforcement.
citation process for a few years now, that we need some way to educate residents. Typically, if a resident receives a notice, that's kind of their first, you know, indication that something is not right or they're not meeting our city code. Most residents tip, you know, typically just honestly don't know what our codes are. So, I feel like if we were to educate people or possibly to send our, you know, a letter out just saying, "Here, here are the codes. Here are the rules and, you know, here's what you can do to be in compliance," it might help the situation. So, the other piece of it is, you know, I'd say about probably between eighty and ninety percent of people, like I said, really don't, aren't familiar with the codes. The other ten percent sometimes are defiant or just feel like they can do whatever they want to do. And one of the biggest violators I see is outdoor storage or violations I see is outdoor storage, including just kind of junk and debris as far as, and also inoperable vehicles. And then probably the second most violation I see would be home businesses that are not legal, that have not come through the interim use permit process. So, just looking for your feedback, I feel like I, you know, persistence, being consistent and persistent is the best. And I've been hesitant to cite people, you know, kind of without chatting about it with you because the way the ordinance is written, we could cite people every two weeks. So, from the point a citation is issued, they have two weeks to pay it and then we can cite again. And believe me, our goal is not to cite people. We would rather seek compliance. We would rather educate people first, talk face-to-face with people and/or send a letter before we get to that citation point. But many times, it takes that citation of two hundred dollars to get their attention and it's not a problem to waive it. If they get that citation and they're in compliance within a couple of weeks and they're working with the city, no big deal. We can waive it. We can waive all of it. We can waive part of it. We can just keep enough to cover the cost for going out there or whatever, you know, whatever you decide. I guess, I just feel like we need to step it up a little for the sake of the city in general so that the residents know that you are going to enforce and then they have kind of earned a greater respect for the council and the city as a whole. And, you know, and for overall property values and how we look because there's a lot of main drags where you're driving, anybody comes into the city and, you know, there's a few I can think of that that's all you notice. So, looking for your feedback and kind of what your thoughts are on the matter.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
What is the reason we haven't enforced them in the past?
Well, I, you know, I think there's been a little bit of hesitation to get too serious about citing and, you know, we had, we started out with just an administrative notice which warned you of a citation. Okay, so it had to reference those sections, whatever section of the code that they were violating, and it warned you of a fine. And then we had the citation itself, which is two hundred dollars per offense. And then we kind of backed off a little and we decided to send a letter that did not threaten. Some people found that the threat of a citation was, you know, offensive for your first letter. So, then we went to a letter that didn't reference anything and sort of just talked about a suspected offense and that we could set up a meeting and that kind of thing. So, my, and the way it's written, we amended the ordinance, the way it's written, it requires a written complaint for that. I would like to be able to send that just to those that I feel need an education on it and then, you know, not that you're going to, you know, there's certainly not time to drive around and look for things, but if you see something, you know, I'd be willing to stop too if I didn't think it was weird. But, I mean, out here where it's so rural, there's not a lot of people knocking on your doors and if you go door-to-door versus some of the other suburbs, you know, it's a little more commonplace. But out here, knocking on a door is a little strange, especially you're not going to find that many people home midday anyway.
Right.
I mean, honestly, I prefer to talk to people face-to-face. I would just, you know, hey, here's the deal and, you know, could you, you know, this is what our ordinance says and it just, it's so much easier. Because sometimes even if you're, even if you're including this section of the code in the exact way that it's phrased, people say, "I don't know what this means."
Aye.
You know, they, they don't interpret it the same or they don't understand it. So, face-to-face, a lot of times is better, but I'm certainly glad to, you know, explain it if they call too. But anyways, so right now, we have three letters. Sort of our nice letter, our first letter. Then the letter that discusses the citation and then the citation is last.
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't understand exactly. Does it mean that you can't, you personally have to get someone from the community to complain about this before a site, before you can even send that first letter that says, you know, "This is a concern"?
Yes, that's the way it's set up now. And I would wholeheartedly agree that if, with the second letter, that we should have something in writing and that everything is funneled through the city clerk and that, you know, we made it so that they have to, you know, say who they are and can't just be random or whatever. And that's, that's great. I'm just saying unless you have some other ideas on how to better educate people, I mean, we put things in the newsletter, a lot of times a little blurb of things that might be common, but, you know, not everybody even reads that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
A question to Ms. Stockman. So, when we change our ordinance to say we're going to give the nice letter first, how many of those were sent out?
Well, we, let's see.
Based on complaints, how many were sent out, written complaints?
So, if we got a written complaint, that's what I always start with now.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. How many of those have we sent out?
Oh, I don't know. I don't recall exactly when. I would say we get one to two complaints per month in the summer. Winter's slower, so there's probably, you know, only a dozen maybe.
Okay. And so then of those dozen, how many have we followed up on?
Some have gotten a notice, an additional notice. There are cases that have gotten citations, not necessarily those, but others that don't, you know, that I continue not to see any progress. So, like I said, my fear has been getting too strict or aggressive, I guess the word would be, without discussing it with you. Because you were in favor last time, you know, of the nicer letter and kind of taking it back a step, I don't want to get too aggressive unless I have the authority to do that.
Okay, I guess I would, I didn't hear an answer and maybe I just didn't hear it correctly. So, of the letters, the nice letters we've sent out.
Okay.
How many of those residents have responded to those letters and we've had conversations with them and explained what is, what the issue is and they have either determined that they're going to remedy the issue or blow us off?
I would say everybody that got a letter has responded.
Okay.
So, that's good.
Okay.
That's the intent. I don't know offhand. We could talk about it more in December too, when I get that summary put together of what the most recent.
I don't, I don't like the thought of staff just going out and observing things and then making complaints on it. I don't like that. I, I, we've always operated on a complaint basis and I prefer to stay with that. We do need to figure out a better process, but if we sent out twelve letters and twelve people responded, I think that's a good, good response. And if we can get a percentage of those twelve, get half of them remedied the situation and we didn't have to go any farther, then you've got a situation that's been taken care of, a resident that is willing to work with us and hopefully won't, that won't happen again. If you have another six that haven't and we have to take another step, then look at that. But I am not in favor of just going out and looking for violations. That's, I mean, I understand why you have codes and why you want them enforced, but I have seen in the past unfair, and I'm not pointing to you as, but unfair processes and I don't like that.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Well, it's also unfair though, if you're seeing or I'm seeing or whoever's seeing, you know, somebody that got a letter for having three or four or a hundred unlicensed vehicles and then somebody right down the street didn't get a letter and they're allowed to continue doing that. And, you know, I, nobody's looking for it, believe me, but I guess it's all in part to how you, you know, how do you want your city to appear? And, yeah, you know, it is your decision for sure and if you don't want that aggressiveness or whatever, but in my mind, it's, it's better to treat people equally. You know, I don't think we're ever going out looking for it, but if you're at a house, we may have gotten a complaint about cars or outdoor storage and then somebody right next door and then the resident that I'm speaking to says, "Well, what about them?" You know, and then my response has to be, "Well, we didn't get a complaint." Well, maybe I should make one or, you know, and then it kind of gets, eh, I don't know if that.
I think that's one of the things that we want to do is we want to, first of all, encourage neighbors to talk to neighbors.
Right.
You know, it's unfortunate that, that we don't feel comfortable enough to, to do that. I think that's, that's where it starts, you know, and when it elevates to the city, it's easier for people to dump it on the city and say, "Let's go take care of that." And, and the harder but more relational building is go over next door and say, "I'm tired of looking at your six junk vehicles in the backyard. What can we do about it? An old place can haul them off or can we put them in a ship?" I mean, try and, try and be collaborative that way. I do think, you know, we are very intentional on what you call the nice letter because I do believe out here, there's a lot of smart people and a word to the wise is sufficient. And as you say, people quite often aren't aware and being made aware, most of the time respond.
Right.
And so, that's really what we've been trying to encourage. So, maybe like you say, in December, when we have more statistics and we can talk about things more in detail, that would make more sense. But I, I think just to, because I've been on the council this whole time and we were intentional on, when we first started coming up with administrative notices, not going right for the juggler to begin with.
Right.
But let's let people respond where they can if they just were not aware and they will quickly identify themselves as those who weren't aware versus those who don't care.
Yep.
And I think that's really what we're looking at. How do we deal with the ones that don't care and won't? But I think we should encourage information. Maybe we need to do a better job in our newsletters, on our website, "Here's some things beware of." And sometimes even that, that awareness. You know, I didn't know that was a problem and I'm not doing it, but I can talk to my neighbor now, "Did you know?" And where we can't, then we start off with the letter that, I'm going to presume you don't know or you wouldn't be doing it or you're, you're not aware of how it's being perceived. There's a lot of big properties out here too. If you went digging, we could find a violation on all of them.
Yep.
But, so I think that it's not totally broken at this point. And then I, I think as, as staff has gotten settled in, we get our financial system all up and running by the end of the year here, we'll have a different approach with their workload too. You know, where does that initial letter come from? How do we handle those complaints and turn it into a letter?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
And Blake.
I, I kind of agree with what you're saying. I think that it's a nice idea and it's very admirable to think that people are going to go to their neighbor, but that is a very hard thing to do because you don't want conflict with your neighbor. You're going to live next door to them for many, many years and saying something to them, even if it's in a very nice way, can be taken wrong because they don't want to change the way they've got it. They're happy. I think if Liz sees something, I don't think, I don't think she's going to be out there looking. And if it's a nice letter, I don't see what the problem is for her to send a nice letter to somebody just reminding them that maybe you want to clean that up a little bit where you're living. I mean, I haven't seen the letter, but I can't see that that would be offensive. And so, I, I can see your point and she sees this and she's, I think sometimes when you live in a community, you get so used to what you see, driving by it every day, that you get numb to it. And when someone from outside of your community comes in and drives by some things, it sticks out and they think, "You know, we should say something about this. This isn't really a good look for now then." And that's just my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Yeah, I mean, you're all right about the neighbors talking to neighbors because I say that all the time. Have you spoken to your neighbor? Well, no, I don't want to offend my neighbor, you know, they don't, yeah, they don't want that, that conflict. But, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, you know, one thing too is maybe we should think about outdoor storage and really go back to our notion that if we can't see it from the street, then, you know, maybe we should go on that kind of thinking because you're right. I mean, there's a lot of properties that may violate it, but what if we can't see it? It's not offensive. And that's part of what I'm kind of getting at is, you know, how, how do people perceive our town when they drive through? But, yeah, just, well, think about it, I guess, treating everybody equally and certainly not out to offend anyone, but there's got to be, it's hard to notify people, you know, educate them.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
To your point, Planner Stockman, I would think, you know, potentially there's ways to evolve using the website, maybe looking at an e-newsletter to go, "Hey, by the way," or something like that. And that might include the education piece, "Hey, you know, here's this ordinance," that type of thing. That might help.
Maybe one thing a month or something.
Yeah. And, you know, that, potentially like the mayor said, once we get into a rhythm, that that might be an option.
Sure. I mean, now's a good time before, you know, we have some time before spring again. You know, this time of year, it's difficult to get much more.
Because you're right, I mean, there's a lot of properties that may violate it, but what if we can't see it, it's not offensive. And that's part of what I'm kind of getting at is, you know, how, how do people perceive our town when they drive through? But, yeah, just, well, think about it, I guess. Treating everybody equally, and certainly not out to offend anyone. But there's gotta be, it's hard to notify people, you know, educate them.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
To your point, Mayor Stockman, and I would think, you know, potentially there's ways to evolve using the website, maybe looking at an e-news letter to go, hey, by the way, or something like that. And that might include the education piece, hey, you know, here's this ordinance, that type of thing, that might help.
Maybe one thing a month or something.
And, you know, that, potentially, like, like the mayor said, once we get into a rhythm, that, that might be an option.
Sure, I mean, now's a good time before, you know, we have some time before spring again. You know, this time of year it's difficult to get much sun anyway, once the snows fly in.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Moreno.
I'm sorry, were you done?
That's okay.
I did send to Lori some suggestions. And one of the things I said was to have staff develop an educational program advising the residents of codes. And, and I'd like to see a welcome packet for new residents that provides that type of information, too. So as new people come into the community, they're made aware of it. And hopefully that's something that staff can look at through the winter period, where we're a little bit slower in the office. And like the mayor said, the, our financial pieces will be finished by then and have some time to do that. And internally work a, work a program for, to provide information.
Okay. And one last thing, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Stockman.
Regarding agricultural properties, too, if they're, if they're legitimately farming, you know, it's less of a concern. All we're asking is that all, you know, the outdoor storage is related to farming, which, you know, because, you know what I mean? If it's, if it is, it is, and so.
Yeah, I'm sure all of those pieces of equipment are still running.
Yeah.
Right. It, it does when you're out in an open space like this, where people have large properties and they get large buildings. And we have a lot of mechanically adept people here that have purposes for the things they're keeping for parts. I've, I've been amazed at some of the places we've dealt with in the past where, I think, really, you're not gonna use that. And they were parting things out, and, you know, because of the internet, they could sell pieces of things around the world. And I was there when they were taking an offer from some of the junk in the Arnie in Africa. Because what was junk to me was currently being used in, in a mining facility in Africa, and you could sell off the parts for quite a bit of money. So it does become difficult when you see the farmstead next door with a lot of junk in the residential area here with the same stuff, but, so it's perspective. So it, it is one of those balancing things that, when it gets to a point of nuisance, that's why we've kept it a complaint-based. But, but even that takes some education. How do we do that? And how do we reassure people if you complained in writing? The neighbor's not gonna come beating on your door saying, what is this? You know, so we have to have a, a balance.
My main concern is that, yeah, we need a very specific defined plan, which we haven't. I mean, that's fine, if we're staying with what we have, I'm good with that. But I need your backing, and I need to just know that you're behind me. Because if we do get to that citation point, you know, that's when it gets a little crazy, and you have to have support.
And I, and I think when we've gotten to the citation point in the past, and the residents have come in, we've stood arm in arm with you. I mean, I, I think you can attest to the fact that we, we haven't gone running when, when people don't like what they were citing. We negotiated on some of it.
Yeah.
Cooperatively, but, but, you know, that, again, was with your support, too. So I think that, and when people just absolutely refuse, then we have ended up in court.
So, okay, well, give it some more thought, and we'll talk again. So I'll bring that, well, we could either bring the summary back to the meeting, or we could make the summary of code enforcement cases part of a Friday update that's not necessarily public, because we had said.
Yeah, and I, I think let's, we could, we could make it part of the update. And then if we, and rethinking since our, our workshop in October here about the value of workshops and some of these things, where we can dig into a specific thing a little deeper without having to run through a whole agenda of other items, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll look at where that might fit into, so.
Sounds good.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
Liz, how often do we get to stage three with the letters? Where it's going to the $200 citation, it's actually ending up in their hands? Does that happen very often?
Well, I haven't been as aggressive as I feel that I could be, because I've gotten the feeling that I shouldn't be. So in other communities, I'm far more aggressive than I am here about issuing citations. And once the word gets out that, oh, the city means business.
Yeah.
It goes a long way. Because people talk, and you guys know that, so, anyway.
Nah. So in, in our then, when they get the soft letter, are they responding 10% of them, 50% of them? And then when we get to number two, 75 are responding? And then at the citation stage, 90% have responded, and it's just like 10% that are like not budging?
Yeah, you know, most of the newer ones are more responsive than some of the one cases that have been around a while. So I feel like we should do the every two weeks thing.
I, I think that the, the ones that you're seeing, like you say, that have been around for a while, they go back to township days when.
Some of them do, yes.
I, I think that the letters we've been getting have been responded to fairly well. The legacy ones are, are really the, we gotta be careful not to skew the, the thinking on how effective it is based on some
Right.
old timers that just have refused.
Right, but at the same time, if we're putting the effort in, and you're, you know, and you are citing, well, here's an, an example. This year, I, I issued so few citations that it wasn't even worth going through assessment, because it would have taken more of my time to get those, you know, through to the county than it would have did. So, anyway, but we can kind of reevaluate. And maybe we split into two different types. I mean, maybe we take the older cases and address them in a different manner, you know? Or just separately, individually, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that, that would help us with our understanding statistically.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Help me understand why there would be a difference in how you treat one over the other.
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, realistically speaking, there wouldn't be, except that we know that the older cases are, seem to be more obstinate and haven't responded even to, you know, because, because I feel like they know we're not gonna do anything. I guess, and they've been there so long, maybe they just don't care. Or maybe the tasks that they have before them get so large, a lot of times, they don't even know how to address it, I don't think.
Well, let's, let's put the specifics until we have some information, because right now we're starting to get into generalities, and and that makes it a little tougher, so.
Okay.
So something to consider, how we want to handle it in the future, and then we'll get back after your little vacation.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, on engineering, 2020 road feasibility studies.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm just here tonight to continue our discussion of roads that we'd like to identify for possible 2020 road improvement projects. Uh, earlier this year, staff and myself developed kind of a, a 2020 CIP recommendation that we discussed with council at a previous council meeting, uh, with roads recommended to be reconstructed in the year 2020. Uh, we had some, some additional discussion on the Rogers Lake area, and had reached out to the city of Ramsey and the city of Oak Grove to see if we could coordinate projects, or at least gain access to that area. And we, we still haven't received any response, so. Um, I just, the, the 194th Lane through Oak Grove is probably the most logical, uh, point. I just reached out and sent another note last week, and, and again, no response. Uh, so at this point, we're no further on that item. Uh, but at, at this point in time, if we want to move forward with projects for next year, it, it is fairly time-sensitive that we freshen up the feasibility reports that have previously been, been completed and/or add to them. So the, the areas that staff recommended earlier included 189th, 190th, and Dolomite. Uh, that's kind of one project area, a second project area of Ebony and Garnett. And then a third project area of Krypton Street, 183rd Avenue, Merle's Lane, and Potassium Street. I did speak with the, the city attorney, and if you would like myself to update those feasibility reports, you can do that just simply by motion. It does not require a resolution at this point. Does not require a resolution until you've actually accepted the feasibility report and are calling for a public improvement hearing. Uh, so if you'd like to move forward with any one of those project areas, or all three of them, the, uh, the next step would be to, I'll just simply make a motion, probably separate motion for each project area, since they are gonna be three separate assessment amounts. And then we can move forward and, and probably be back in December to discuss updated reports.
All right. So we're talking about 189th, 190th, Dolomite, and really Ebony and Garnett, you're talking about one neighborhood.
Correct, they are connected.
Yeah.
They are connected, uh.
I mean, it, it might be two separate projects because of the, the type of work that's being done, but.
Correct.
As far as effect on the community, and the other one is Krypton. Which, again, is, is a whole closed-in community. And everybody's coming out, everybody that comes out of Merle's Lane and, and that whole area is coming up through Krypton to 66.
Correct.
All right, council, do we want to proceed with, we, according to our financial understanding, we have cash for this project as it's been projected?
Yes.
So, can I obtain a motion for those three project areas?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the update of the feasibility study for Ebony and Garnett.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion on that? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the update of the feasibility study for, if I get this right, chain 189th, Dolomite, and 190th? Correct, out of them all?
Motion?
I second it.
Motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
I'd like to make a motion to update the feasibility study. I'm gonna miss one here, Krypton, Merle's Way, and is it 183rd Avenue?
183rd Avenue. And Potassium Street.
And Potassium Street.
I second it.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then we'll wait to see if Oak Grove or Ramsey responds to your latest inquiry.
Correct.
To discuss Rogers Lake.
Correct. Yeah, I'll reach out to them again, our, my initial response from Ramsey was that it was in their CIP, but it was scheduled for the year 2027 or 2028. Those, those would be the connecting roads within the city of Ramsey, so it was quite late. And that they were, at that time, going through the, the process of updating their CIP and would share it with us once a, a new CIP had been prepared, so.
So if we clean up the roads there, everybody's gonna run out to Oak Grove then.
Everyone, sorry.
Nobody's gonna want to drive along those.
Right.
If they're gonna deteriorate for another eight years in Ramsey, they're, they're not in great shape to begin with down there.
No, they're not.
They'll all be gone, 194th, so.
Right. See, I'll, I'll reach out again, ultimately, if I don't receive a response, it might be, you know, at some point I might request a face-to-face meeting, or, you know, at this point, I'm just dealing with, with city staff. Um, but we'll keep trying, and.
I've, I've got some numbers for administrators, if you need a manager, so.
Yeah, I am, I am contacting both the, the administrators and the city engineers, as well as public works directors, so. You know, at this point, particularly with Oak Grove, I, I imagine it's kind of a hard question to answer, is can we use your road for construction? Because what does that mean? Does it, you know, you know, if it's.
I think what we were looking at is, is would this be a good time to upgrade your road as part of the construction? We'll use it coming in and, and fix it all the way out to 7.
Right.
For 7.
Good question.
Real quick.
189th, that's the road I live on, what does it mean, upgrade, tarred it?
This is a different section, this is between Jarvis and Dolomite east of you. Yep. It's a blacktop road that needs to be redone, so. All right, anything else, Shane?
Nothing else for me?
All right. Anybody from the council? All right, we'll move on. Recycle Center Surveillance Quarters.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Bryan?
Um, I had a meeting today with Ellen and Lori just to get some questions answered, and, and so that I, I had a better understanding of what was going forward. And one of my concerns for this project was how we're connecting, what needs to be done from the internet perspective. But as I understand that now, after our conversation, we've, in essence, it, it's not gonna matter who we use for our internet provider. The system should be able to wirelessly do what we need to do across our different, across, I guess, I would, the easiest way would be our campus to, to our different buildings, to get to City Hall and/or the Recycling Center and/or the Fire Station and the City Office. So I see the internet piece as a separate project, and Lori agreed with me, and that's something that her and Ellen are going to use, or look, continue to look into going forward. You know, there's some criticalness of what we're doing with Zayo, but I'm, I'm confident that Lori and Ellen can, can address that. So I think that part has eased my concern. And from what I understand, there's definitely potentials going forward, as it was explained to me, to take advantage of, of the wireless across to the different buildings, that not only can we use that functionality for needs at the Recycling Center, but can include the City Hall and/or the existing connection with Zayo at the Fire Station, potentially. So I think that technology is going to be better for the city as a whole. And with that in mind, I would like to make a motion to approve IPS as the vendor of choice for this project.
I second it.
Right, motion to second, any more discussion? So, we have a resolution here, 2019-73. And what you're, what you're saying at this point is to identify IPS Integrated Protection Systems as the vendor of choice for this, so that the city staff can focus all their questions and attention to that.
With, with, with IPS.
So we're not necessarily accepting a full proposal yet, because there's still details being worked out?
There, there are still some questions, but I think, but as far as just the technology and the vendor choice, I think it's my opinion that using the wireless has, has more benefits than we, than just providing surveillance. So that's why I'm saying that it's on the recommendation of staff that they want to just be, to be able to focus in on one vendor.
And I, I, you know, I thank staff, thank Ellen for doing excellent work on details. She's communicated very clearly, um,
Yes.
her interactions with the various vendors, and, uh, Mr. West, you're to be commended for your interaction. And she has written it up extremely, thinks highly of, of everything you've provided.
She was very conscientious.
It's, it's been a, it's been a good collaborative effort, we appreciate that. So we have a, a, a motion and a second to approve Integrated Protection Systems as the vendor of choice for this project. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, in addition, after your conversation today, Councilmember Bryan, where do we go next here, then?
Well, it's my understanding there's, um, we, there's a couple, some clarification that we needed from the county on what's eligible and what's not. But based on everything, we potentially could go forward with the current project, and, and any of the eligible expenses from the county could be, could be addressed and taken care of. The payment from the county would be monthly for the grant, so we may have to use the, the. use the, the, um, monthly payment and to, to get it through. Um, and then on, there's some question about, you know, how much, how much of the equipment that the, the grant would actually cover, so that still needs to be identified, whether certain things are included or not. Um, if they're not, then potentially we would have to look for, um, where we were, where we're gonna fund the rest of the project.
You know, and, and looking through the literature that, that Ellen had supplied us too, I know one of the projects was, um, access cards for this building and cameras for this building, I would like the council to have a discussion on, um, where the, the park system fits into this, 'cause one of the things that, we, we certainly have had a lot of issues at the Recycling Center that caused us to consider this, but we've also had, uh, in our Memorial Park here and down at Lions, in, uh, Twin Lakes Park, um, issues that caused us to shut down facilities, to have to redo turf areas, and, and so, one of the things that we had talked about is, because this system's expandable to cover those areas, um, how that integrates, and I just wanna make sure that, that we have our priorities in order, if we do come short on any funds, I just wanna make sure that we choose the biggest impact for the city in that subsequent discussion. So once we find out from the county how much that grant covers of this proposal, and what's left to cover in, um, with, with camera, with surveillance equipment, and what's left to fund, and where do we come with those funds? So is that germane to the discussion you've had?
Yeah, that, that, I think that would be in there, because if we're talking, if we're dealing with parks, there's potential to use some of the park capital to cover some of those things. Um, certainly if the, um, grant isn't gonna cover everything, then I think we're gonna have to have to a conversation with, with Lori and Ellen to go, where would, how, how would we fund the rest of the project? And then certainly if we wanted, needed to expand it, it, it's probably another continuing discussion for, do we do that now? As, as part of one big thing, or we add it in, or we do it in pieces, and, and how that would all work with, with IPS? I don't know, I don't know if Lori has any feedback or thoughts on that?
Mayor and councilmembers, the, the funding for the surveillance is being provided by the SCORE funds, the Anoka County Recycling SCORE funds, and that cannot be used for parks or any other buildings besides what's being done at the Recycling Center.
So, so my question, and I understand the parks, I mean, that's, that was when I called you previously.
Yep.
Uh, we've had a problem with the county before, where monies were accepted, we were township, and then they came back and said, "You didn't use it for what I was given for," and we had to pay it back.
Yep.
So I understand the caution there, and with the parks, we, I don't think we ever assumed anything of this for the parks, but we do have a park fund for capital that we could do something there. My concern was, you know, we looked at, um, access for this building, that I don't, I didn't think that could tie in with the recycling.
Yeah, we're checking on that right now, we have a call into the county to ask, because we do need a central point, whether that be this building, or the Fire Station, or the City Hall, in order to have the surveillance, we have to have a, a central point that the, the lines all come in at.
Yeah, and my understanding was that central point was gonna be city offices, 'cause that's obviously where you'd be monitoring things.
Right.
And we would be looking at, using that as a central point, and therefore, that was necessary to be able to do this, the Recycling Center, therefore that was tied together.
That's what we're...
Hopefully the county would, would support that, and then, in that, we could have some savings on our current security system by rolling it into this project.
Correct.
So, that was my understanding, my question was this building and then subsequent park structures, so...
Yeah, we're checking on all of that right now.
Alright, so at this point, we've selected a vendor, now we just have to get a few more questions answered, and then we'll have final numbers put together, and, alright.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbough.
Um, I, I do prefer that, um, if we do have to break it down based on what, where the SCORE funds can be allocated to, is that we look at the two locations that we're having the difficulties in, which is the Recycle Center and our parks, we've, you know, knock on wood, haven't had any issue here, we haven't had any issue at the Fire Department, um, so if we do have to bring in some of our own funds, um, that we look at, the, the parks, 'cause that's, that's costing us money, both in maintenance and materials.
Well, then it's, it's, it's also shutting down facilities.
Well, that, yeah, and, and repairing, and, yeah, yep, so I think that, if we're gonna do something, let's focus on the, the two areas that we've had the most problems.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bryant.
So, um, I'm thinking, unless anybody jacks, I'd like to make a motion, um, because we know there are still some outstanding details remaining, um, there's a final proposal to come in, um, and, and we're waiting some, with some questions from the county, I'd like to make a motion to approve the funding for the project, since it, it is dealing with the security with the Recycling Center, um, not to exceed the eligible expenses available for the project with, from the grant, and if there's any additional work to be included requiring extra funding, or any questions that staff, mayor have, that they can work with the mayor and myself to, to come up with a feasible solution that we can present, present at a future council meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, did the clerk treasurer get that motion?
Got it, yeah.
Alright, discussion on that. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbough.
Um, I, I should've said this during the discussion, but I, I wanna thank, do thank Lori and Ellen, um, looking at what was put together, and I'm sure what the learning curve was on this, um, I really appreciate everything staff did on this, um, to me, it's one of the more thorough, um, proposals I've seen, it's probably one, other than say, like, uh, our planning and zoning, or our, our engineering, the feasibility reports, things like that, this has been by far the most thorough thing that has ever been presented to me as a council member.
Yep.
And I truly appreciate that.
Well, Mayor and council, that is all, Ellen.
Um, please tell her, thank you.
She's been working hard on this.
Yes, she has.
Working hard, yeah.
And, and there's a lot of information to keep up with, it seems like daily, so...
Right.
And she had to work with John West, I just, she's still here, I don't know.
No.
No.
Yeah.
Mr. West, do you wanna say anything while you're here?
Uh, well, Mayor, Council, uh, thanks for inviting me tonight, I will, uh, give you the opportunity to ask questions, but I also wanted to reiterate that Ellen was, uh, very conscientious, she had, uh, a very steep learning curve, as you mentioned, uh, but she was able to take the three vendors that she was working with and sort of, uh, figure out what she really needed to figure out, and was able to ask some of the right questions, um, so kudos to her, um, and staff for being able to put it together. It's, when you don't deal with it every day, like I do, it's, it's like speaking a different language sometimes, and you have a, um, a tricky situation with the Zayo and how it's your interconnection's set up, but, uh, we've got that all figured out, I'm sure, and it shouldn't be a big deal, but I wanted to make sure that if you had, any of you, council, had questions about, uh, what you read in the packet, or, uh, the technology, I'm, I'm here to answer those questions.
Mr. Go ahead.
Councilmember Bryant.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. West, um, there's no, I'm, I was just curious today during our discussion, with, with setting up the wireless devices, there's no issues with weather and snow and rain and whatever, the, the connectivity is...
No.
Still the, the same, has the same redundancy and...
Has the same speed, there is no issues with that, it's AES-encrypted, uh, it's a DOD-type approved product, um, it's basically what the, the DOT in Minnesota uses, uh, to send their camera traffic, so it's the same stuff.
We don't have a lineup of cars sitting out there using our...
No, no. Well, you know, that depends on how, how, uh, strong the access point is, and if they have the, the code to get into it, but, um, we can limit that as well, so...
No, I, I, I would say that Ellen has communicated very thoroughly, um, it, it appears that you guys spent a lot of time together, um, but she's been very thorough in her communications to us.
Lot of phone calls, which is, which is, that's what I'm here for, uh, to educate the customer, to make sure that you have all the proper information to make a, a, a good decision.
Well, I think that, that's part of what, what's been impressive, is the accessibility, because it's, it's one thing to make a proposal, it's another thing to be there to answer all the questions, indicating that I'm gonna continue to be here...
Right.
If you choose me, so, I think that's part of the, the recommendation and selection process, so...
Well, I have everything, everything to lose, right? I mean, I'm, I'm a local business, businessman here, uh, in the community, a lot of people know who I am, and I wanna succeed and, um, do well for the city here, um, it's my name, so...
Thank you.
If it works here, maybe we can introduce you to people in Oak Grove and you can do something.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
For those of you don't know, Mr. West is a council member in Oak Grove.
Oh, okay.
And he's also the chair of the Water Service.
Okay.
Oak Grove does have the same system, um, not quite as elaborate, um, but they have the same products and, uh, services that you will be, uh, getting if you decide to move forward.
Alright, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for your patience and your attendance.
You can't use my joke, Shane laughed.
Son of a...
Can't use it.
Down in this joke.
Could you mute that?
Alright, so on to the next thing. Item G, resolution to approve Alexandra House donation request. Ran into a little bit of a hiccup here, normally we, we contribute $500 to Alexandra House each year, and this year we had a request earlier in the year for mediation services, and, uh, we took the 500, we normally give to Alexandra House, and used it for that. At the time, we took it out of the general fund, as we've been cleaning up our financial records, we, we realized that should be in a, in the fund for charitable contributions, so we exhausted that account in our budgetary process here. Um, we have recently received, uh, a donation from the Hockey Boosters, and, uh, to the tune of $9,600, and so I would like to make a motion that we take some of that contribution from the hockey fund, or hockey donation, and apply it to the Alexandra House and give them the $500 that we normally would, so this wouldn't come out of our normal donation account, but it would come out of a designated account, so we can properly track this in our accounting system. So I'm recommending a move, a move that we, uh, donate $500 to the Alexandra House, and that would come from the recently received hockey donation, or Hockey Boosters donation. We have a second.
I'll second that.
And a motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, was there any designation from the Hockey Association, what they wanted the money to go to? Did they want it to go to the Hockey...
That'll be on the, the next resolution, um...
If not.
And their designation is, I believe it's just for, uh, supplement and ha, enhanced existing city amenities.
And so we consider this existing city amenities?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Generally, this is, this is their, their donation from the pull tabs over at the saloon.
Oh, okay, I didn't know, okay.
That, that doesn't come, like, some people will donate something specific for...
Okay, that's what I thought.
A project, but this is...
I get it.
This is their quarterly, isn't it?
Yes.
This is quarterly.
Okay.
And this is their quarterly percentage that they give to the city.
Sure, okay.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
To Councilmember Blake, I mean, so we, we, we're, um, our city clerk treasurer Lori's proposing to use some of the proceeds from that for the next agenda item, but there would theoretically be some remaining. Um, my concern would be, you know, we had 3,000 budgeted for the year, um, we made a, uh, conscious, um, at the time to say, "Well, this is what we're aware of now, um, we're gonna, we're gonna, this is how we're gonna donate our money," and nothing else has came up throughout the year, and we'd have to revisit, revisit it if something else comes up, well, that's, this is, here's where we're at. Um, I'm not, you know, and may, maybe this is something that, that we work on in the future, that if, if the city wants to be, um, you know, needs to potentially look at where we're donating our money and, and where the funds are and/or, you know, how we adjust that for things that potentially do come up in the, in the future, um, for different organizations.
And I think that, that certainly, you know, Lori has, you know, been here just over six months, um, these are, these are all part of the, the process we expect, is clerk treasurer, that those will be heads up to us as we discuss budgets in the future. These are things that, um, you know, again, in, in the process we've been going through in the last year and a half, um, these are learning curves for us. We haven't had the requests from mediation, we haven't donated the mediation services previously, so...
Mm-hmm.
So I think that certainly this is, um, I, I would expect, Lori, you're taking notes as, to these types of things, so that we'll be better in our budgeting process going forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbough.
Um, I, I know that I seconded the motion, but for discussion purposes, um, the resolution we have in front of us for the Alexandra House is approving a 2020 donation, so to me, that donation would not occur until 2020, and we would take it out of our 2020 budget. Good. That's, that's how I read that, I don't... Yep. And we, and we did make a conscious decision to, um, donate the 500, 500 to the mediation services earlier this year. So I guess what that means is because we did not increase our budget for contributions, um, mediation services would not receive funds unless we found funds elsewhere if they do come and ask again. But I read this as a 2020 donation to Alexandra House, um, coming out of 2020 budget, for which we budgeted for. So I don't know if it's something we would wait till 2020 to have the resolution, or just understand that the check isn't cut till 2020.
You can do it either way.
When, when would we normally send that check, do you know?
In the fall of the previous year, so 2019, it would normally go out.
For the 2020?
Oh.
I do remember in the past, they always seemed to be a year in advance, or half a year in advance.
I don't remember that. Anyway, one year they didn't even contact us.
They forgot.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbough.
I'd be in favor of cutting the check in the new year to be in the 2020 budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbough.
To, to Lori, so I, did I understand you to say that we could cut it now, but it comes out of 2020 budget, or do we have to...
We should wait till 2020.
Wait till 2020, okay, that's fine. I'd rather wait till 2020. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Does that mean it's, I'm just trying to get this straight in my head, that's still coming out of the Hockey... No. Association money? Okay.
No, so we would vote down my motion, and then re-propose it.
Okay.
So let's vote on that existing motion.
Or you could just rescind it.
Alright, can we rescind it? So I'll rescind my motion, and accept a new motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
I would like to make a motion to, there's one way to do it, table this till, or continue, table this until Jan, the January 2020 council meeting.
Mayor and councilmembers, we can move to accept the donation for the 2020 year, and have the check cut at that time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant. That first motion dies for lack of a second.
Says a ping pong ball here.
Mr. Mayor. I thought this was gonna be an easy one. Councilmember Bryant.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 donation to the Exa, Alexandria House, Resolution 2019 dash 75, uh, with the caveat that the, um, check will, um, be, will come out of the, our 2020 budget, um, for the new year.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I guess I say we almost made it there. All right, so, last item here, Resolution 2019-76, Acceptance of El Corver Youth Hockey Association Donation, and a recommendation from the city clerk treasurer. So we have a donation from the El Corver Youth Hockey Association through their charitable gambling fund, a quarterly donation of $9,643.30. And so the resolution here is to accept that donation. And I, first of all, want to move to accept that donation through Resolution 2019-76.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, secondly, we have a recommendation from staff that we investigate and purchase rink liners for our ice rink. And we have some information that was provided here, why we use a liner, a couple of links as to what's out there. I commend staff for taking initiative. I think this will be a tremendous benefit in reduction of staff labor.
Yes.
Overall, I think it'll be a great potential lengthen the skating season and the quality of our skating. So I move that we allow staff to investigate and pursue this project with a not to exceed all-in price of $3,500. So whatever it takes to get the liner and the supporting hardware, and that staff could do that for $3,500 or less.
I second that.
I guess to finish that, should there be additional expenses beyond that, or additional considerations, staff would then bring that back to council for further discussion. But if it can be done for $3,500 or less, staff would proceed. So with that, you still second?
I still second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Discussion. Councilmember Bryant.
Question, I literally just thought of this right now. So we can, does this change, this is going to change, this question's to Lori, how we get water, put water on the ice rink, right?
Absolutely.
Because it's more of a dump, less of a spray?
Yeah, staff, or, I'm sorry, mayor and councilmembers, what's currently happening is staff is going to.
Mark.
Mark Well, who donates water, truckloads of water, they come out and they flood the rink. When it warms up, all of the water seeps down underneath the boards, which results in starting from scratch again. So then they have to go over, continue to flood this rink, and when it finally gets cold enough, it's such an uneven cold, they're trying to flood it and keep it level, but it's freezing and unfreezing and leaking out, and so if we have a liner, it contains all of that ice in there, they can dump the water in right now and let it freeze, just as a lake would freeze, and it's going to freeze nice and level.
And if it gets to be 40 this weekend, we don't lose our water.
We won't lose our water. And this will eliminate a lot of our staff's time. They're spending so much time trying to keep that rink flooded and even, and this is going to be a big plus. And then the end of the season, they can take it out, let it dry, and roll it up for storage. We can use it in years to come.
And I know we're talking about the hockey arena at this point, I would just, as you investigate, consider how some of the things I saw online would work very well for our pleasure rink as well.
Correct.
Right now, we just have dirt.
That was part two of my question, was the pleasure rink too potentially?
I can't do both for $3,500.
Okay.
No, but, but as you investigate, see what makes sense for the futures. All right. So, and motion and a second.
I second it.
We have it. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Before we adjourn, if I could ask for a courtesy, and I should have done it when the fire, when the Boy Scouts were here, I want to, on behalf of the Now Then Lions, thank the residents of Now Then for their support this last weekend for Steve and Sandy Thompson at the benefit. We were overwhelmed. We put in hundreds and hundreds of hours, you know, organizing it and working it and tearing it down, and we enjoyed every one of those hours. It was really a lot of fun, and to see the turnout for them was wonderful. And those Boy Scouts, they were, there were kids that weren't even tall enough to reach the pitcher on the table, or even to try to get it filled in their kitchen. So just thank you to the Now Then residents for supporting one of their residents.
You know, I second that, the community pulling together like that, people that had never met the Thompsons volunteering those hundreds of hours.
That's me, I had never met them.
The people that donated, the silent auction was tremendous. I had an auctioneer that came there and said, considering that we'd never really done anything at this level, it was very professionally done. But the best part was, well over 600 people showed up. We know that we fed 600 people, but a lot of people didn't bother to stay and eat, a lot of people came and visited. But the Thompsons were able to, Steve was able to feel healthy enough to come before 3:00 and was still there close to 8:00, greeting people, people they hadn't seen in years, people they hadn't met. And it was a tremendous community event. I commend the Lions for.
Yes.
The hard work, volunteers.
Yes.
The Cub Scouts, the school groups that came out, almost more help than we could use. It was wonderful.
I don't want people to think we don't need help, but.
Oh, but it really did lighten the load, so.
Well, Mary Rainville took huge amount of that work on herself in organizing that. I think that was amazing, so.
Good job, man.
It had to be done.
It had to be done, so thank you.
I had a good group of people working with me, and.
And the Thompsons are extremely grateful.
Yes.
So, thanks to all involved into the communities. And thank you, Mary, for the hard work.
Yes.
And Lions, too, for getting that done.
Yeah, we're happy to do it.
I watched you do it, and you do amaze me.
Part of being in a large family, you just take control and you get it done, and.
All right, now I will.
Mr. Mayor.
Accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll admit, I'll have the motion to adjourn.
I second that.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance tonight.